God, we thank you for everything that you do for us. We thank you for our known blessings, and we thank you for all our unknown blessings. We ask that you lead, guide, and direct us on every decision that's to be made here this morning. Thank you in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, moving into its own accord.
I'd like to welcome everyone to this morning's meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that we've got a very long agenda today, and we'd like to try to get out of here by lunch if at all possible. So if anyone needs to speak to any issue that's on the on the agenda or any issue that's not on the agenda during the roundtable portion of our meeting, I would ask you to keep your comments as brief as possible. I'll try to keep them under three minutes if you can. And when you come to when you approach the podium, please, for the record, state your name and reason for being here. With that being said, Ms. Daniels, is there any additions or deletions for the agenda?
There is not.
Okay, no additions. Chair Lintana motion to approve the agenda.
So was.
Advertised motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving down to section one, which is recognitions, resolutions, and presentations. Item number one is presentation. We've got an Oak Grove plantation donation to the Jackson County Fire Rescue. Ms. Daniels.
I believe there is a Mr. Drew Miller here to make that presentation.
If you would, come on forward.
Good morning.
Okay, so last year, Ms. Chastity Sheffield was able to find Oak Grove Plantation. And then shortly after that, Commissioner Peacock and the Economic Development Director at that time came in and introduced Drew further to speak, figure out how we could partner with him to better promote his business and bring more hunting opportunities into Jackson County. With that came the evolution of Fire and Feathers, which was a fire fire rescue fundraiser that we were able to host out at Oak Grove Plantation. We were able to raise eighteen thousand dollars in funds from that event, half of which went to fire rescue. And I'll let Charlie speak on a little bit more on the use of those funds. In addition to that, the TDC awarded a sponsorship to Drew for purchasing some of the supplies for the event. And so Drew has come back to be able to donate some of the money that he had been able to get from that back to fire rescue. So I'll let Charlie speak a little bit more on what they use those funds for.
Yeah, so one of the things that we really set out on is we applied for grant funding, but we're also looking to raise money to fund our blood administration program, which we've talked about with the Board of County Commissioners. And so this is very crucial in a rural area that's we do have a local community hospital, but we are far away from trauma centers. And so blood is the ultimate chain of survival for patients. And so we were super happy to be able to raise this money. We've also applied for grant funding and spoke with Chairman Donner Pro, and we did receive a grant week before last, and we were able to help fund that. So we've got several different sources from fundraising to grant funds that will help this blood administration program get off the ground, hopefully by October or November. One good thing about this program is we're going to be the first rural ground ambulance service in the state of Florida that carries blood. There's a couple in metropolitan areas in South Florida, and the flight services cover it. However, you know, due to weather and maintenance issues, flight services may be unavailable. And so, you know, having the blood on the ground with the crews twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week is going to be a huge increase in patient survivability across the county. So not only for trauma, but can also be used for medical patients as well that have different bleeding disorders. So we're still working, Keith and I are still working to put this program together, and we hope to get it launched by October, November, before the end of the year. So and we want to say we appreciate the TDC and Mr. Miller for opening up his property to hosting this event. I think it was a great turnout. We had a lot of great sponsors, a lot of good time. It was a different kind of event that we've held here in Jackson County. We're used to the golf tournaments, the five Ks, and this is kind of new a new thing that sparked interest from a different sportsman. So let Mr. Miller talk.
Yeah, good morning.
Morning. We enjoyed having it. Looking forward to doing it again. God blessed us with this property and with this place. And we feel like, who are we if we're not blessing others? So we love teaming up and pairing up with these guys and hope we can do it again. So thank you all very much.
Yeah, we, on behalf of the board, we certainly appreciate the work of the TDC, the work of you, Mr. Miller, and Mr. Bruner. I think that that Blood on the Ground program will will pay dividends in the future. I think it's very important, and it's especially especially fruitful to know that we've got that we're one of the only rural counties in the state of Florida. Once this program is initiated, to have that available for our citizens. And I think that's extremely beneficial, and will again, pay dividends in the future of having that blood available for our citizens. So we certainly appreciate it. We hope we look forward to you doing it again next year. I think it is, as Charlie said, kind of a unique fundraising type event, and I think it would prove very beneficial moving forward. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to comment because Mr. Miller's operation is out in my district. For the people who are not aware of it, he had, why don't you tell us what you've got out there?
So we are the only place in Southern Florida where people can come and actually do mallard training with with training bird dogs or whatever to actually hunt mallards. It's a retriever training facility. We're the only place in the state of Florida where you can actually go and partake in the shooting of captive reared mallards. We raise the ducks on our property, and we raise it just like a farm animal. The only difference is we've got an itch market that we're selling to. So it's a it's a really great opportunity. It keeps people from having to travel all the way from here out to the middle of the state, Arkansas, Texas, and places like Mississippi, places where the flyaway actually is more prevalent. It used to be a flyaway. It used to be here. So the idea is to keep those dollars at home in our backyard. And it's going really well. We've we've been in the green ever since we've opened, so we're very fortunate in that. And like I said earlier, we're expanding. We're starting to do pheasant. We're starting to do quail hunts, that kind of thing. We're also looking at maybe doing a dove club with a few other farmers in the area. That will help them to get more out of their land, kind of helping farmers out. Another thing, we're we're organic farmers. We're I'm an organic farmer. We're the only organic farm in Jackson County on the on the grand scale. And we're looking at doing new facilities for that, trying to maybe even eventually do a co-op for organic farming. So we're on the move to make things happen in Jackson County. It's just going to take a little time.
That's certainly very exciting, and we certainly wish you the best of luck, and appreciate you coming and informing us and our citizens about your operations out there.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Man, I think Mary wants to get a picture of everybody. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, we're asking for the motion to accept the money for the donation.
Okay, Chair Lintana motion to accept the money as explained. Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed. Same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you guys again.
Get a picture. That might be your better side.
Okay, moving down the agenda. Item number two, under recognitions, resolutions, and presentations, is our recognition of Employee of the Month for July twenty twenty-four. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, Ms. Austin is going to make this presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to present the Employee of the Month award for July twenty twenty-four, and Ms. Chastity Sheffield is being recognized today. You're busy, girl. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas Jackson County has established an Employee of the Month program to recognize one employee to represent the various departments. And whereas Chastity Sheffield began her employment with the county on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, she currently serves as Program Manager for the Terrace Development Council and has been selected as Employee of the Month for July twenty twenty-four for the standards that she has displayed in the performance of her job duties. And whereas Chastity demonstrates professionalism in every task she faces, and her loyalty to Jackson County is recognized by her coworkers, Chastity exhibits exemplary customer service and leadership abilities. She is able to manage several projects at once and produce a high volume of work while providing great customer service to the public. And whereas Chastity is always willing to go the extra mile to accomplish deadlines and assist other departments, Veteran Services moved to Russ to the Russ House in March of twenty twenty-four, and Chastity has graciously greeted and assisted numerous veteran visitors with her warm and welcoming personality. Her eagerness to lend her expertise as well as her daily interactions is a true testament to her patriotism and compassion. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida commends and congratulates Chastity Sheffield on her selection as Employee of the Month for July twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
On the side on behalf of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners, Chastity, I get an opportunity to work with you as a member of the Board of County Commissioners of TDC. And as everything that this jury read is very true, we certainly appreciate all of your hard work, your professionalism, your dedication, your diligence, and doing the job, doing one good job, and we look forward to many, many more years of your work on the TDC and representing Jackson County very well.
Thank you.
Chair Lintana motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we name Ms. Chastity Sheffield Employee of the Month, and authorize you to sign the proclamation and give her a check for two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, Chair.
Two hundred dollars.
Two hundred, yeah. Trying to help you out a little bit. Got a motion.
You're doing a good job.
Second, Mr. Crutchfield. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed. Same sign. That motion carries unanimously as well. Moving down the agenda, item number three is employees, Employee Years of Service Awards. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, first we have Jeffrey Register. Are you presenting? Or Walter Gammon?
All right. Today, we get we recognize that Mr. Walter Gammon is here. He started with the county June twenty-third of nineteen ninety-nine with twenty-five years of continual service. Walter has been married to Denise since two thousand seventeen. In spare time, you'll likely find him tending cattle at the sale in case, what you laughing about? In case everybody don't know, Walter, I don't see how he does it to keep all his roads up and all that. But and he he probably runs more cattle by himself than anybody else. But Walter is German in origin, meaning commander of the army. And he began with his time with Roden Bridge on a mowing crew. He transferred to a brush cutter in oh four, then was promoted to his current position as equipment operator four, operating the grader in oh five. His character quality was each other diligence versus slothfulness, investing all my energies to complete the tasks that are assigned to me. Walter is always hard at work, ensuring his grading cycle is minimally impacted by special projects and unexpected circumstances. You'd be hard pressed to find him sitting out. And benefit, we know we can count on Walter to get the job done in the timely manner. And Walter, we commend him with twenty-five years of service. You're one of the old timers we got.
Walter, congratulations on twenty-five years of effective and diligent service to Jackson County. If you would, we've got two other awards. If you would kind of hang out over there by Ms. Mary, and we'll get a picture of all three of y'all as soon as we finish presenting the other two awards. Ms. Daniels? Yes, sir.
I'd just like to make one comment about Walter. Don't get in front of him. He'll run over you with that grader. He goes faster than anybody in the county, and he does a good job.
Yes, sir.
Yes, next we have Chief Bruner is going to make the presentation.
Good morning again.
I'd like to call Mr. Christopher Von Air out from Fire Rescue. Today, we're recognizing Mr. Christopher Von Air, firefighter EMT for five years of service. The name Christopher has a great meaning of bearing Christ. Chris has been married to Lindsay for eleven years, and they have two fur babies, a dog Mika and a rabbit named Merlin. In his spare time, Chris enjoys restoring his old truck, working on cars and on computers. Chris originally joined Jackson County Fire Rescue in two thousand and seven, and worked here for a number of years, and left, but he's now been back for five years this time, and he is a firefighter EMT on A ship. As a previous employee, Chris enjoys training and orienting new employees to our organization in our county. The character quality we selected was also diligence versus slothfulness, investing all of his energies to complete the tasks that are assigned to him. Chris is a hardworking employee who is always punctual. He always maintains a glass half-full mentality while working in the department. He has always accepted the task of training and orienting our new employees to our department, and he can always has a friendly smile and can strike but strike up a conversation with anyone. Chris's diligence with new employees has reminded me to remain diligent in all work and tasks assigned to me, and always to look at the glass half-full. Chris, thank you for five years of loyalty to our department. Appreciate you.
Chris, on behalf of the board, we appreciate your five years of work, and we're glad that you came back to go to work for us. So if you would, just hang out real quickly, and we'll get a picture of all three immediately afterwards. Our next employee that we're recognizing is Fred Andration. Fred?
Yeah. So Fred Andration has been working with the county for five years. The meaning of the name Fred is from the old German name Friedrich, meaning peaceful ruler, which I think is very appropriate, since he is called the IT sheriff. So in his free time, Fred enjoys photography, learning about, and repairing all manner of electronics, and working on cars, trucks, and motorcycles, as you can see from our back parking lot on any given day. You never know what Fred's coming to work in. His responsibilities, before joining the VOCC, Fred was an independent IT contractor, assisting local business with their information technology needs. Fred joined the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners as an IT technician in June of twenty nineteen. His duties included workstation setup and troubleshooting, network and hard drive configuration, audiovisual technology setup, and software installation and utilization. In twenty twenty-three, Fred was tapped to become the Director of the IT Department, adding budget development, employee supervision, and project management duties to his position. I had to really talk Fred into taking that position because he just enjoys being in the field so much. So I asked him to give me sixty days, and he decided that he did enjoy it, and he could still be in the field an adequate amount of time. So I chose the character quality of resourcefulness versus wastefulness for Fred, which is finding practical uses for that which others would overlook or discard. He uses his deep understanding of technical components. Fred has Fred has envisioned new ways of utilizing limited resources to keep the county's information technology assets up to date. He often identifies areas where resources are underutilized, suggesting ways in which they could be used that haven't yet been explored. An example of this is his work to acquire higher-speed internet services at various county facilities. In many cases, he has been able to improve services while saving the county money in the process. He also recently helped Bascom. That's still in the works, but he has been helping them identify cost savings and better service, which is certainly not in our job description. But anytime we can help a municipality in a way that we have the resources, we try to do that. Fred's demonstration of resourcefulness benefits the entire county. His ability to locate and obtain solutions to technical issues allows staff to focus on their duties and serve residents more efficiently. His determination to find opportunities for savings within various projects frees up financial resources within the county budget, making them available for other priorities. His boundless knowledge is appreciated by staff and those in the community for whom he provides his expertise. So thank you, Fred. Really glad you took me.
It goes without. It goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway, that, you know, our organization is only as good as as our employees, and we've been very fortunate to have a number of employees that we've been able to recognize each month for, just like this morning, with Walter, Christopher, and Fred, that we've got outstanding employees that display a high degree of professionalism, dedication to doing their jobs well, and being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. And for that, I think I'll speak for all of the Board of County Commissioners and for Ms. Daniels, that we certainly appreciate your hard work and your dedication to serving the citizens of Jackson County. So for that, thank you. Quickly, Mary, we'll get a picture with all of y'all. I will. Okay, that concludes section number one. Under section number two, public hearing, we have no items, so that'll take us to section three, which is community development. Item number one under community development is board approval to set a public hearing for Project Banjo. Ms. Daniels?
This is a request to set a public hearing for July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four at nine a.m. for a general development order to construct a two thousand seven hundred square foot building to be used as a coffee shop with a drive-through window and sit-down restaurant, and construct thirty-two thousand seventy-five square foot vehicular use area and sidewalks. This project will be located at twenty-one ninety-five Highway seventy-one South in unincorporated Jackson County.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch to set a public hearing, and that is for July twenty-third at nine o'clock a.m. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed. Same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number two, moving down the agenda, is board approval to set a public hearing for Bethlehem Ridge subdivision. Ms. Daniels?
This is a request to set a public hearing for July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four at nine o'clock a.m. for a ten-lot minor residential subdivision with lots ranging from five acres to sixteen point five two acres to be known as Bethlehem Ridge subdivision. The proposed subdivision is situated south of Coley Road, east of Mutual Road, and west Bethlehem Road in unincorporated Jackson County.
Thank you, Chair Lintana motion. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed. Same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number three is a board approval, board approval to set a public hearing for a small-scale amendment. Ms. Daniels?
This is a request to set a public hearing for a small-scale amendment that changed sixteen point three one acres of one parcel from residential to mixed-use urban transitional. The parcel is located on the east side of Lake Shore Drive and the north side of Highway ninety in unincorporated Jackson County.
You've heard the explanation. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions or any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as read, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number four is board approval of an applicant to serve as the District Two Planning Commissioner. Ms. Daniels?
This is a request to appoint Ms. Caroline Chapel to the seat of District Two Planning Commissioner for a three-year term. Ms. Chapel filed through the Boarding Committee's procedure, and she brings experience serving on various boards and agencies.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation. Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed. That motion carries unanimously.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just say here that Mr. Mike Crutchfield has decided that he has had enough fun on the planning commission.
Been on this for a long time.
Many, many, many years. He would not agree to letting me recognize him publicly, but I do want to publicly say thank you to Mr. Crutchfield. He was a huge mentor to me in my days at community development, and really just been a good friend to myself and to Jackson County. So I wanted to say thank you to him.
I know that Mike is, because I've come in front of that planning and zoning board many, many times, and Mike has been served on there for many, many years. So I would hope that you would join with me, the other commissioners, in expressing, asking Willand to express our appreciation to Mike for his service on that board.
Perhaps you can send him a letter from you.
Yeah, that would be good.
Or from the board.
Yeah, from the board, and I can sign it as chairman.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, then, can you take care of that?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, item number five is a board review and recommendation to abate property on Butler Road. Ms. Daniels?
This is a request for board review and recommendation to abate the property at seventy-one thirty Butler Road. This code enforcement case is under consideration to file a motion with the court for a court order to hire a contractor to abate the property on behalf of the county. Contractors were contacted on six twenty-seven twenty-four to provide quotes. You all should have handouts at your seat with the results. I believe we've got, do you not have one?
No, ma'am.
Right, yeah. Where'd you hand it about, like, before the board meeting?
So you can kind of take a look over that. But the legal options available are, one, file another motion for contempt and request the court impose additional sanctions against the property owner, or two, request the court appoint a third person to claim the property.
Well, these quotes, they include vehicles at three hundred dollars each. One of the contractors said five hundred dollars each. How many vehicles are are we looking at?
I can tell you, probably can tell us a lot better. Mr. Mayo, he is the owns property adjacent to this. There's several there. This is Reverend Bill Mayo. He's the minister down at the Assembly of God Church in Sneed's. Go ahead.
Reverend Mayo.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak into this. My wife and I, Donna, we purchased some property just east and north of the property that is being discussed this morning. On December the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, we understand that it borders up to the property. We also had a survey done in June, I'm sorry, on March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, which revealed by an in-depth research by Dixieland Survey, the survey shows that our property line actually runs through the end of the mobile home that has owned that property, about ten feet into it, that is occupied there by the gentleman that owns the property. We spoke with the gentleman and advised him that if he would, to please clear all of the debris that was blocking our existing driveway so that we could access it and begin to plan further development for our our property. This conversation was witnessed by the surveyor. Since that time, trying to get power in there, that it had existing power well and septic tank on the property. I've spoken with the power company, and they require now thirty-plus feet so that they can go in there, remove the old poles that were damaged from the hurricane, and then begin the process of getting new poles and new lines put in there. So we did clear a place where they could get in there to do what they needed to do. After clearing the right-of-way, the owner of the property that we're speaking of this morning immediately began filling the driveway, the existing driveway again with massive debris of junk, which included refrigerators that are, as far as speaking to the vehicles, the only one that I know, well, there's two that can be seen from the road. I don't know what's behind the fence. I'm not going on that. But after exhausting all the efforts that I've been able to talk to the landowner, I've made contact with the Sheriff's Department on June the twenty-seventh. Officers came out. Actually, I've made contact twice. Officers came out, made a report, and then on June the twenty-seventh, three deputies responded and made contact with the owner of the property and advised him again to move the debris. He stated that when we put the new access up for the electrical company to come in and put their new poles and stuff up, that it was that it negated the existing driveway was there. I then spoke with him myself and said, you know, and just asked him to move it again, and that that was not the case. It doesn't negate any property rights on ourselves because we own the property. Gentlemen, I fully understand. If anybody in this room understands what it is to make decisions that affects people's livelihoods, I do. I do it every single day. This is, to me, this is not just a a matter of moving debris. I have to make every decision that I make as a minister of the gospel, which includes eternal souls. But it does not negate the fact that there are rules and that there are ordinances in place. It does not negate the fact that we have gone above and beyond and asked the owner of the property to please remove it. I've gone as far as to getting some quotes on a bulldozer myself, but that would not be the right thing to do because it's in your the right thing to do because it's in your hands, gentlemen, and I'm asking you today to make a decision. I don't want to see anybody out of their home. We're not expecting that. We simply want the debris cleared where we can access our property and put a privacy fence up, and that's what I'm asking this board to do today.
Mr. Chairman, this situation has been ongoing, Wendy, how many years? Two, three, bare minimum?
Started in June, I'm sorry, started in June. Of last year, June, you guys asked him to.
We actually started before then.
You did. It was in '22, and then in October of '23, he was found in contempt of the order that you gave him given the year before, and the next step should be for the county to get an order for the judge to have a third-party cleanup, and so that's, that's kind of where we are.
And at the time the motion was made, I made the motion, was to turn it over, go to outside counsel, expend the funds to, for them to take it to court, get it cleaned up, and to clean it up if necessary. But I will make a motion this morning that we accept these bids, the low bidder, go and clean this up, and Michelle, can't we place a lien on his property?
For the cost?
For the cost, and instruct counsel to, whatever the cost comes to, to file a lien on his property. Anything else we need to do on that, Michelle?
The only thing that I would add is. What was that?
What?
She was saying it has to be court-ordered, but this is, Matt, the attorney at Neighbors Givlin at Hamlin, that wanted the board's approval before we proceeded with going with the contractor. She's asking about, this is above your.
Your motion.
My motion is to proceed.
And, and the one thing that I would add is that, you know, I think we've gone above and beyond in trying to get this situation rectified without having to go to this, this level of, of. Go to this level, but I don't know that we've got any other choice at this point in time. My only concern is, is that we're going to expend these dollars, put a tax lien on that property. We may never see those dollars again, but, I mean, through the abatement process.
Well, if we're going to have code enforcement and time ordinances, we have to enforce them. I know that we may lose it, but hopefully if it ever sells, we can recoup our money.
Yeah, I think more importantly than that, if, if we don't go forward with enforcing the ordinance, then it just gives other people the idea that, you know.
This gentleman is moving stuff in there daily. I see him all the time, haul, still hauling stuff in there, but he's also taking it to another property that code enforcement is working on over on Sandridge Church Road and stashing it over there, so.
It's very unfortunate for the, for the neighbors that.
Oh, I have gotten, I bet I've got 100 complaints through my career on this piece of property.
We've got a motion.
That's a motion.
We got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, a second from Commissioner Branch.
Can I ask you to.
Proceed.
Can I ask you to just incorporate in your motion that the circumstances weren't going with just getting three quotes versus advertising because, because the amount is about 15,000 ordinarily, you would go through.
I thought I was going to go with the lowest quote.
We did. I'm just asking you to just incorporate that into your findings that circumstances weren't going around your.
To restate the motion is to proceed with cleaning the property, placing the property, placing a lien on the property, and then going with low bid.
That's correct.
It's a low bid and including moving the garbage.
Well, I would say that low bid would be M and M land clearing based on the quote, the, the cost per vehicle and.
It's $300 per car. I know there's an old dump truck in there, and I think there's a couple of their old cars, and a boat, big sailboat.
Once these costs are incurred, Ms. Daniels, where will these funds come from?
Kara, did you have a source identified?
If I could suggest, Mr. Miller, sell more ducks and maybe donate it to the home.
We will identify a source and put that on the record.
Okay. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. The mayor, we appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you very much.
And just so that we're all clear, Wendy, this is just the recommendation to the court, and then the court will actually.
Take action.
Yeah, the judge could still hold him in contempt on her own authority, but we wanted to go in prepared, but this is the cost that we anticipate because we were going to send, you know, out onto the person's property. We were just trying to have all of our ducks in a row before we.
But we are requesting abatement, correct?
We are.
Okay.
Okay, that concludes all of the items under community development. That takes us to section four, which is reports and requests. I trust everyone's had a chance to look through all of the items included on the consent agenda, which are six items, A through F. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. Chair, entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Mr. Crutchfield. Hearing no other questions, all those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number two, under reports and requests, is a board approval of a option agreement with TPA. Ms. Daniels.
Yes, sir. We have Mr. Darwin Gilmore here. Do you want to come forward? He has been brought up to speed on this and can share with you, and as well as William Long is present. This is a joint agreement with the county and the city, but before we do that, I did want to just acknowledge that Darwin is now our new economic development director and formally welcome him aboard.
Absolutely. On behalf of the board, we, we are very appreciative of the fact that you've agreed to take on that position. We look for a lot of good things. Probably, I don't mean to put a whole lot of pressure on you, but we've seen your work in the past.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity. It's, appreciate Ms. Daniels. Everybody, thank you so much. It's, this is her first thing where she said, okay, Darwin, you need to grab a hold of this. So this proposal from TPA Group, I'm sure you've reviewed this option agreement several months ago. It was presented to the city and the county, the city of Marianna and, and Jackson County. This option is defined as something where they want to, to, to have the option to pay us $100 per acre for the right to exercise the option to procure land for $10,000 per acre within the distribution park. There's 235 acres in question here. So it's essentially a rental or a lease, as it was brought up in the City of Marianna meeting, that, that, that is an opportunity for them to go out and market this industrial property, to focus in the distribution sector, the manufacturing sector, people in technology, and we feel like this is a cost-effective marketing opportunity. It's been reviewed and vetted by Michelle and Matt, and we've tried to incorporate, best we know, all of the concerns. So I would like to ask you to approve this option agreement, and again, we have provisions where we can back out of it if we find a candidate that we prefer to go into a portion of that 235 acres. We have the power to go in and buy them out of that option, so to speak. So we just think this is a cost-effective way to reach formidable candidates around the globe. They have many, many connections to TPA to us, so if I can entertain any questions on that.
I would say that, you know, from my little bit of research as a result of this coming forward, this seems to be a, a very reasonable way to market that property, and I think it's a way that other communities have marketed properties like this in the past successfully.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Darwin, you do know the county owns 16 acres to the east of that.
Yes.
There is a piece of land that is privately owned between them, so if we have any discussions with them, we probably need to be thinking about some sort of a right-of-way deed or easement or some access for the county to get across. I think it's a 20-acre tract.
Who owns that property? Is that Howard?
The ones that own, I can't remember. It's been a while since I looked at it, but they own directly behind it. They own pretty good tract. I think it's an old house place.
Yeah. I see Mr. Wong here. I assume that the city did approve this as well at their meeting.
Shaffer. It's the Shaffer family, but this is something, I know Zat was working on this for some time, and I think it's a great idea. So I make a motion, we approve it.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions or the comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Both in good and unanimous. Go ahead.
I mean, I made the motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Darwin, thank you, and again, welcome to board.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Item number three, moving down the agenda, is request of board approval of a J A G C certificate of participation. Ms. Daniels, do we have?
Requesting board approval of the fiscal year 2324 JAGC certificate of participation. The grant is used for the drug task force.
Chairman, in there they say sub-receipients. Who are the sub-receipients?
I think the sheriff's office is considered such recipient. The board is the.
The recipient.
Is the recipient, then it passes through.
Passes through, okay.
And this, this is a grant that we've gotten in the past many years, the same situation, no, no consequential differences on what we've done in the past.
Subrecipients.
That's right.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, that's, motion carries unanimously. Item number four, moving down the agenda, is board review and approval of the group benefits renewal of 2024. Ms. Daniels.
The renewal for the group health insurance was 3.5% increase. The rates for all other group benefits remain the same. We also have, I believe I saw Michael John here, if y'all have any specific questions, but we were pleased with the renewal and recommend approving.
Okay. Mr. Milton, anything you need to add to Ms. Daniels' comments?
There are, there is one.
So we pick you up on the microphone for posterity. Good morning.
I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that there, there's a mandate on the benefits that is deductible and out-of-pocket increase. Individual is 1,500 now deductible, family is 3,000. The mandate from the government is that it goes from 1,500 to a $1,600 minimum deductible, and from 3,000 to $3,200 minimum deductible, and the out-of-pocket on the individual goes to 3,200 instead of 3,000, and the family goes from 6,000 to 6,400.
And these are all state mandated?
All government, federal.
No, federal, okay.
Other than that, good renewal.
Okay.
Submove, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions, comments?
Yeah. How does this compare with other agencies? You're going up 3.5%, changing the deductibles and everything. So what's the difference? What do we get? What could we get somewhere else or cannot?
The Senate announced this last year, because of all of our, our counties in our area, and even looked at the Sheriff's Association, and we were, as far as benefit and cost, we were, we had better benefit and lower cost, so we did not do that this year, but that's where we were standing. And as far as industry-wide, I know that the renewal rates are much higher than 3.5%. What is the average right now, Michael John?
Millman is a company, the vendor that looks at that kind of thing. The average across the country is 6%. Your averaging, I've been keeping up with this since, I think, 2005. Your average increase is probably around 4%, and that is not taken into consideration, probably 1.5 million dollars that has been received back to the county through either pro-share refund or wellness funds.
How much are we going to get back this year? Do we know?
We don't know that.
Have we? When will we know it?
But with that being said, that pro-share contract today says that every two years you get 50% of any gain over and above claims, administrative expenses, et cetera, effective 2025, I believe, 25, 26, it goes to 100% refund, so that your, your share in the gain goes up to 100%.
Very good.
Your, 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 your medical loss ratio is running right at 75%. It needs to be between 60 and 70, typically.
So we're a little hot.
You're a little bit high. Claims, just warranted through the claims, unfortunately, but.
I'm just concerned for our employees. It's going up, the costs, benefits are going down.
Right. Well, we don't, we don't have any control over the benefit part.
That's mandated. There's a thing in there from the IRS.
I didn't get anything.
Nothing.
Got one page. I didn't have anything to review. If I did, I probably wouldn't be asking the questions.
The family.
Well, I'd ask more.
The family.
They're right here, they're right here, some from the IRS. Exer, the identity, and they. They're, we, we write the minimum deductible allowed under our top plan, so they upped the minimum.
So our deductible is going from 15 to 16, right?
That's right. Your family premium.
3,200 per family.
Your family premium has been, it is 140810 a month. It's going to 42238. That's extremely low, I believe, in the marketplace for the family cost to be that.
It's going from what to what?
Sir.
What did you say it's going from?
It's going up $7.14 a pay period. Excuse me, it's going from 40810 to 42238.
Which is extremely low.
Yes.
When do we have to have this ratified?
Well, we're here for it today.
I know you are. My question is, when do you have to have it? Because I'd like to.
We've got.
I know you've got a motion.
Got a motion and a second on the, on the floor.
I know you do, but they can withdraw their motion.
Is there a, is there a.
If they, if they're interested.
Mr. Peacock, Mr. Peacock, the. At this point in life, and I'm just, for informational purposes, if, if you don't go through with it fairly soon, open enrollment is in August, for an October 1 transfer date of changes, et cetera. So it's not 11th hour, but it's.
Pretty close.
It's time to make a decision.
Ten and a half.
It's 10, 10:30.
We're at that point.
Clay?
This is a topic of discussion when we get together as clerks statewide. In talking to other clerks our size and smaller, our rates are way better. I mean, it, it's not even close. You look around at school board, I, I think hospital, our rates are comparable or better on most of those, and I know with the other clerks, some of them have gone with the Sheriff's Association. I think Sheriff's Association came and presented to us, but they're a little bit higher even, you know, for us, and, and benefits are not as good or the same, but thi- this is a topic that we talked about because a lot of clerks have their administrator as a, or the county administrator for the smaller county, so they, you know, that's something that's near and dear.
What I, what I hear generally speaking is the benefits that we receive are, are great, the rates that we're paying are low, and in comparison to all others, and I just don't see a need to, to do anything but go ahead and prove this at this point in time. Well, anyway, we've got a motion from Commissioner McKinney and a second from Mr. Crutchfield. A question from Commissioner Crutchfield?
Yeah, experience I have, if it's a one-time thing and you're not going to need it again, you can hunt around, may come up with a bargain price, or it's continued year after year after year, or a good working relationship with somebody, you may get a little cheaper somewhere else, but then they going to be right up to them level the next year or next, or even higher, because I don't, I don't see where you gain anything by, you know, on something like that. You know, if it was a one, one-time deal, you're getting a job done, and you get quotes, like we got quote here, and then not going again. I see doing that, but that's, that's why I feel like in this table, we are, yeah.
You're also getting a $35,000, excuse me, wellness fund per year. You're also getting a thirty, thirty-five thousand dollar, excuse me, wellness fund per year.
Which figures into that, makes it even.
Well, it just, it's on top of it.
Right.
That's money that the county gets back.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Milton, Ms. Judy, we appreciate the explanation and answering the questions.
I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Foundation, we appreciate that.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving down the agenda to item number five, a board acceptance of early, of the early literacy grant award and approval of the memorandum of understanding. Ms. Daniels?
It's the library director applied for a grant from Early Learning Coalition Northwest Florida, and a grant for ten thousand dollars was awarded, asking for the board to accept the grant and also authorize the chairman to sign the M O U.
Heard the explanation, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Item number six, board approval of the C O O P M O A with Calhoun County. I'm not sure what all that stands for, but Ms. Daniels will explain it.
Yeah, this is a memorandum of agreement with Calhoun County Emergency Management to provide reciprocal facilities for continuity of operations. Uh, so if any, if either party should need to use each other's facilities, that's what it's for. Chief Maddox, can I add anything?
That's it, summed up.
Summed up.
Yes, sir.
Got a motion for Commissioner Branch, second from Commissioner Peacock. Any questions, comments, Mr. Maddox? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion also carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Uh, item number, it's your item as well, but board approval of the school board memorandum of, uh, agreement renewal with the Jackson County School Board on the sending.
I'll let you take it.
Uh, this is the agreement with the school board for the shelter, using the school as a shelter in the event that we have to turn that on. Um, and it's the standard M O A that we have every year that is signed, Daniel.
No substantive changes to what's been approved in the past?
No substantive changes.
Chair will entertain a motion.
I got a question.
I got a motion from Commissioner Branch, second from Commissioner Peacock with a question.
Correct.
Okay.
Keith, have you had any discussions with the school board about the buildings they're putting up at Grand Ridge, about hardening one of them or some of them, or a shelter?
We have not, other than asking, what are the plans? Are they going to be hardened as a shelter? And I actually mentioned that to the chairman in our, um, pre-board meeting. Uh, we're going to follow up with that, Doug Powell, et cetera, to find out what the, what code they're going to build it to, and if it meets standard, it's another option for us.
I know that, uh, when they were going to build down at Four Points, the board approved a motion to go after funds.
The school board?
To help them harden it.
Well, we're, we're working as a consultant to, uh, DAD Architects, and, uh, uh, I do know that the building is being designed as a hardened facility.
Good. Oh, is it?
Yes.
That's good.
And that's something we can look at. If that's the case, then it gives us options instead of just.
We need more than just Mariana.
Sure.
I would confirm that with, uh, uh, with Mr. Dallas Ellis or Superintendent Benton, but that's my understanding.
We're meeting, uh, we're meeting with them later this month, and we'll be out at the shelter, doing some dry runs and testing of equipment. Uh, so it, during that, I'll have some discussions with them then, and I'll follow up officially.
I do know that there's a substantial additional cost associated with, uh, with hardening the, the building, and, uh, uh, all of the envelope type issues, but my understanding is that's the direction that they're hoping to proceed with.
Oh, is it ten to twenty percent?
On a big, you know.
That's what they told us.
Ten, yeah, ten to.
And the man that told us is sitting back there, Mr. Wiggins.
That's generally correct, especially on a bigger facility like this. Okay, oh, we've got a motion. Did we get a motion from Commissioner Branch and a second from Commissioner Peacock? Any other questions? Comments, all those in favor of approval of the, uh, M O A, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Keith. Uh, item number eight is, uh, the, uh, approval of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five hazmat grant. Mr. Maddox?
Yes, sir. Uh, this is essentially the same, yes, sort of N P A hazmat grant that, uh, we do every year. There's no substantive changes this year.
You've heard the explanation, chair will entertain a motion. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number nine, uh, which is also Mr. Maddox, which is the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five approval of the E M P A agreement.
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry, the, the, the number eight item, the hazmat, there was a small, there's a little bit of reduction, like six hundred dollar reduction in the.
In, in the amount of the grant?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, apologize for that. E M P A grant, no substantive changes at all. Um, and that's the, again, same, same grant.
Same brand as we've been getting.
So.
Got a motion from Commissioner Crutchfield, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number ten, moving down the agenda, is, uh, approval of the Florida Forest Service Operations Plan. Is that yours, Mr. Maddox?
Yes, sir, and, uh, mine and Chief Brennan's, again, same. Uh, no substantive changes, it's the operation plan, Division four, three outlines their general operations, including with us and volunteer fire departments, and then, uh, the roughly five hundred twenty-five thousand acres of land they've got protected.
Okay.
So.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions? Comments, hearing none, all in favor of that motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, that's saying, uh, that motion also carries unanimously. Okay, thank you, Mr. Maddox. Item number eleven is board approval of a tourist development council sponsorship. Uh, this is a reimbursement for Jackson County Disc Golf. Ms. Daniels?
Well, this is the board request to approve a sponsorship reimbursement for the Jackson County Disc Golf Club for its February third annual open event. The T D C approved previously approved reimbursement for one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. I will say that, uh, uh, this is the event that's held out at the Citizens Lodge, uh, Park, and, uh, the, the group that has put that on has been very, uh, complimentary, uh, I would say of the, of the facility out there, and, uh, I think they hope to, uh, continue to have that tournament out there and potentially grow that, uh, as well. Um, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving down the agenda, item number twelve is board approval of changes to a, uh, to our payment processing system, uh, for T D C. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, last year an agreement was signed with forty, a payment processing system used for the facility rental software civic rec. Upon further review, the original contract checked off the wrong credit card fee option and has been, being absorbed by the county. This requested to update the agreement to pass the credit card fee onto customers when receipt, when reserving a county facility.
Which is more, more typical. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Item thirteen, uh, board approval of the Willis Road Change Order Number One. Ms. Daniels?
The change order in the amount of two thousand three hundred and eight dollars and ninety-four cent to come from D one bond funds.
So.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions? Comments or concerns, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please symbolize by raising their right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number fourteen, board approve, approval of Willis Road. This is a final, final pay application and the closeout, receipt of the closeout documents. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, the staff is pleased with the work that's been done and ready to close out the project and recommend, uh, approving.
Who did that work?
Anderson Columbia.
AC did, yeah.
So.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please show by raising their right hands. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number fifteen, this is, uh, board approval of an agreement with DAG Architects for Architectural Design Continuing Services. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, DAG Architects was selected for continuing services from R F Q twenty-three, twenty-four dash twenty-two. Uh, we do recommend approving the attached agreement, and Mr. Stuart Wiggins is present if you have any questions.
Okay, we've got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Mr. Wiggins, anything need to add while you're here? We look forward to, uh, working with you guys. All right. Got a motion again from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Please pass on our, uh, to Mr. Clary that we look forward to working with, uh, you guys. Thank you. Item number, uh, item number sixteen, board approval of amendment number two to Florida Commerce Grant H two, H twenty-four ninety-four.
The C D B G C V grant was awarded to provide roughly two point eight million dollars to renovate the H vac system and associated components on the third floor of Jackson Hospital. Um, with the additional cost that was not anticipated to do that, uh, we went back to Florida Commerce, and they have agreed to increase that grant amount to five million four hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and extend the end date to nine twenty twenty, I mean, nine thirty twenty twenty-five.
Does that cover the entire cost then?
So.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion also carries unanimously. Item number seventeen, uh, which is board approval of amendment one to, uh, M T one fifty-one, which is the sheriff's office safe room grant. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, so we have been working with Florida Commerce to, um, make the budgets where they're a little easier to deal with because we're working with two different grants, um, for this project. So this amendment removes the engineering costs and adds that deliverable amount to the construction portion of this grant. The engineering costs will be covered by the sheriff's office F D L E funding. This has been approved by Florida Commerce.
So really what we're doing is just basically taking the engineering cost out of the, uh, out of that one particular grant, moving it over into the other legislative appropriation.
Exactly.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Branch, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions, question from?
Yeah, I see that this is a three thousand square foot room. Is that going to be inside the, uh, proposed building? What is it?
Yes, this will be incorporated into the new sheriff's office.
So it'll be a safe room within the main part of the facility.
How big is the proposed building?
I don't know that we, I don't know that C R A is the architectural firm that's working on those plans. I've not seen any preliminary.
Wondering, you know.
I believe they're still working, they're still working through drafts, from my understanding of what that'll look like. Um, but this is.
This is administrative, what we're talking about now.
This really doesn't have, I don't think, any bearing on the design of the facility at this point. We're just shifting money from one source to another source.
Correct.
Well, you've got a problem because you got an election going on, and some of the candidates are saying they're not moving into that new building. So now we got, you know, this building, this safe room is now part of the old, the new building. What are we going to do?
I, I don't think that's anything for us to really get into a discussion today on. I mean, I.
Okay.
I'm at. I mean, that, that'll be a bridge that.
We may have to cross it.
That time.
We may have to cross it, based upon what I'm hearing.
Choice, I think if they had a choice of moving into a brand new building, whatever that may, whatever shape that may take up, or staying in that old J job facility, I think they'll probably change their mind.
I would.
I mean, there's a lot, a lot of variables between now and.
Well, they're saying they'd go back out on highway ninety. And if we're, if they're not going to move out there, we need to do something with that building ASAP, because we're spending a lot of money on power out there.
Well, I, I think there are plans, there have been discussions about options for that building. I know that Will and I have talked about a number of different options, and I think as, uh, this process moves forward, we'll, we'll either be in a position to either sell the building, uh, market it, or, uh, potentially, uh, use it for, uh, some of our constitutionals.
Okay.
Okay. So, uh, we've got a motion. I, who did we get a motion from? Commissioner Branch, and second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Uh, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number eighteen, which is board approval to award the twenty-three, twenty-four dash eighteen C D B G C V Jackson Hospital Air Purification Improvement Project. This is from We're Constructors. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, uh, the details are listed of the advertising process, but we recommend awarding this to We're Constructors Incorporated in the amount of four million nine hundred fifty-nine thousand and seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Did this come as, I mean, certainly, uh, we're approving, we're contractors. We've not really been involved in any of that process, so I'm assuming this is coming as a recommendation from the board of trustees?
Well, there is, um, a couple of representatives here from the hospital.
Okay.
Now, I saw Mr. Torbit.
Mr. Torbit?
And Maggie.
I assume that you guys have been involved in this overall process. We're contractors. I know is, uh, a company that's done some work for y'all. It's just the recommendation of.
It was not a recommendation of the board of trustees per se. It is, uh, through the grant and David Melvin doing the administration of the grant. Uh, the board did approve the grant and the work to be done, but has not picked the contractor. Um, that is involved with the grant, um, selection process. Uh, so I don't know that they would have to approve.
Yes, sir, it's my understanding that the procurement process would go through the county, and we assume that they've done all their due diligence on that. We can take it to the board after the next meeting if you'd like, but typically that's not how we run our procurement.
So, so, again, I'm, I'm showing my ignorance here, but, uh, because this is not really a county project, it's more of a hospital project. I know that you guys have been involved in the, the overall design and the program.
It is a county, a grant through the county that was done a couple of years ago after COVID. It was some COVID dollars that we asked the county to be able to, or the county allowed us to use that grant to, uh, change the air purification.
But this was a competitively bid process.
Correct.
And Weir was the low bidder.
That is correct.
They went through all the qualifications, they meet all.
David Melvin has done, facilitated all of that, so it has met all of the guidelines that are necessary.
Okay, got a mo-, do we have a motion to approve?
I will make a motion.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions? All we got. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, guys.
Uh, thank you, thank you for the county allowing us to, to do that.
It'll be a big improvement, and hopefully we'll, uh, allow you guys to, uh, make some, uh.
Well, we just hope we never have to use it as a pandemic.
We'll have clean air when we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number nineteen is board approval of interlocal agreements for the five cent local auction gas tax. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, so these interlocal agreements are with the following municipalities, Alford, Campbellton, Cottonville, Gratesville, Grand Ridge, Greenwood, Malone, Mariana, and Snead. Uh, these agreements are, uh, Mr. Rooks asked that we have these in the, specific for the new five cent gas tax, although we already have interlocals for the other. He like, just thought it was cleaner to have one specifically for the newest. So this is just for them to get their, officially get their disbursement.
Got a motion from Commissioner Branch.
Second.
Second from Commissioner McKinney.
Now, that was all funds, they can be expended when, um, October one?
They'll start collecting in October one, and, and reality, and I, I wrote a letter targeting these values, you're probably looking at least two months before the money starts going out. Because they'll have to collect it, you know, they'll collect it October.
Right.
Part revenue, you know, there's a little lead time for them to start sending that money.
They do that monthly or quarterly?
They'll, my understanding is they'll get it monthly, monthly, yeah. But once it starts going, it'll be every month. You're probably looking at December, last December, first of January before the payment comes out, realistically.
Okay, thanks for that explanation, Mr. Rooks. Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Branch and a second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as, uh, stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty, this is board approval to Pay Cathedral Corporation. Uh, this is for trim expenses. Ms. Daniels?
This is a request to Pay Cathedral Corporation invoice six one seven two one zero in the amount of nineteen thousand seven forty-four for the mailing of trim notices for the twenty-four, twenty-five tax year, and this is a budgeted expense.
Budgeted expense. Uh, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions? Or comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please symbolize by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-one, board approval to, uh, the notice to proceed for, this is Blue Springs, uh, Road. This is phase two sewer project. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, this project was awarded to Gulf Coast. Yes, this project was awarded to Gulf Coast Utilities Contractors LLC on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and, uh, I recommend approving the notice to proceed.
So moved.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney, any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-two, which is board approval of a notice of award to Blankenship Contracting for Indian Springs, this is Phase Two C Sewer Extension Project, Ms. Daniels.
So the lowest qualified bidder is Blankenship Contracting, it's best recommendation that the project be awarded to Blankenship. Uh, the contract price of award is six million one hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents.
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as, uh, stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, that's motion also carries unanimously. Item number twenty-three is, uh, board approval of Stones Aquatic Weed and Algae Removal, this is an invoice for removal and, uh, uh, debris's entry in Spring, uh, in Spring Creek, right there close to the, uh, headwaters.
Yes, this is for board approval of the invoice in the amount of seventeen thousand seven hundred dollars.
We had, uh, budgeted roughly forty thousand dollars for this, so it came in significantly lower. You are satisfied with the work, I've not put my eyes on it. Is this, has it been done?
This is a quote, so he was just out last week to look at it, um, since we, I mean, it's been since January, I didn't feel the need to go ahead and kind of do the emergency declarations, so just bringing the quote back. Um, another verbal quote I got from another local company was over forty-five, so, um, this is much more in line of what I was anticipating for the project, so if this is the war, he said he's six to eight weeks out.
Six to eight weeks?
Yeah.
And I noticed, uh, we've already started doing some clearing, I guess, in-house on the, uh, bank along adjacent to, to, uh, highway ninety.
Yes, sir, so I'm also at last week, we do have a couple of large trees, it's gonna have to be pulled up the hill, so we're gonna coordinate that road bridge and go ahead and get the rest of it tidied up.
Good, very good, yes, sir.
I, I applaud you for cleaning up Spring Creek, it certainly needs it, but, uh, I'm getting a lot of complaints about the mill pond, and I can't believe you're not getting them.
I am, believe me, believe me.
It stinks. Is this, you said we budgeted forty thousand?
The, the TDC authorized not to exceed forty for spring creeks.
Can we use the remaining funds to work on getting some of that decaying matter out of the mill pond, starting on the highway ninety end of it? So that the rest of it will, can work its way down and get out of there.
We could, I mean, I, I almost have to go back to the TDC or just ultimately, y'all, I mean, I hate them.
Can we?
I would ask what, how, how will you do that, I mean?
He's got that machine that goes in there and picks that stuff up. You've got a lot of, uh, decaying material.
I've seen it.
Oh.
I've seen it, smelled it.
And it's, it's not healthy for the people that are trying to live out there around.
How is the, how is the, the, the herbicide or the, uh, the application of the, the herbicide, how did that go?
It's, and it's working, that's why it's starting to.
Starting to collect down there.
And the more it works, the more decaying matter you're gonna have, and the more it's gonna stain.
But it eventually starts dropping down, doesn't it?
It will, so a couple of different things, um, I've had a lot of people request, yeah, open the dam, well, that, that ain't gonna work for floating debris. Um, majority of the wa, when you open the dam, majority of the water flows under, so it's actually vacuuming from the bottom of the water column. Um, so we're actually holding back a lot more water now in order to float that over the grass level, so if we lower the water, it's just gonna entangle in more of the grass mats, so, um, keeping the water level up is allowing more floating debris to come over the dam. Um, the only option for mechanical removal would be a company like Stones to bring their harvester out and pull that off the, the top couple feet of the, uh, of the surface.
Now, we had, we've done that recently, one time before, a couple of years ago, correct?
Well, we did an actual harvest where he cut the material.
Yeah, he went and he cut this, it'd be a little bit different. This, maybe he could do some partial coating, but get that stuff out of there.
Yeah, I actually talked with him about it while he was here, uh, last week, and he's got a African, basically a trash collector in development that's not ready just yet to activate. But it would be more along the lines of something to be used in this case where it is suspended floating material that just needs to be raked together and removed. Um, so, I mean, I don't know that it's ready yet, but he is working on something for this application.
Well, you know, eh, eh, the overall discussion of the Hydrilla and, and Mill Pond, I, I think we're gonna have to, uh, have another discussion because, I mean, this is the third application that we've done, it was the second.
Fourth, really.
Fourth. And, uh, at the end of, uh, the summer season last year, it worked well. Uh, finally, I think we did one probably in August or September of last summer. And then by winter time, it was clear. And, uh, but as soon as springtime hit, summertime hit, we've seen another explosive growth, uh, going through the same process again. In my conversation with you, Rhett, um, when this happened back in the early nineties, we did a full drawdown. Let it, let the Mill Pond stay drawdown for several, several months. Did a very aggressive spraying application, both, uh, by, by land and by air, is what I recall you saying. And that, at that point in time, as a result of that, uh, aggressive treatment, uh, you, you think, I mean, do you think that was the reason it was effectively stayed, uh, that it stayed under control for as many years as it did?
That, along with the, um, the grass carp that were brought in, the grass carp really is what kept it knocked back for many, many years. I mean, killing it obviously done well, but, um, the maintenance portion of it was done by the grass carp, and so we're doing another stocking, uh, in the fall, September, August, sometime, um, increasing, so they try to do, I think it's two fish per acre is the standard stock limit. They're gonna, which is what was put in year before last, so we've got two-year-old fresh crop of carp. We want to do another overstocking, um, in the fall of this year, in a few months, and then hopefully this herbicide treatment will knock it back and the increase in carp will be able to maintain it.
The Hydrilla was not in the pond back when they did the drawdown before, was it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Well, I do know that those tubers stay in the mud. You can draw it down and the water can stay off it for ten years, put the water back and it starts growing.
I just know that, the, the people that I've talked to and the people that you've talked to and, and probably Rhett as well and everybody else that has any, uh, you know, have, uh, exhibited a lot of patience with this. But it's getting, it's getting to be work, you know, it's, it's, it's tough to live right there on the Mill Pond.
Absolutely.
I mean, and, and have to deal with not only the unsightliness of it, but also the odor that comes along with the decaying material and, uh, I just, I, whatever, whatever the most effective means of getting it clear, I think we need to, need to look at because it is a, uh, it's a natural resource, it's, it's extremely important for Jackson County.
It is, it's a gem for Jackson County, but, uh, you know, right now, it's just not, what we're doing is not working, and I don't know the answer.
I'll add too, uh, so, we have struggled in the past few years for funding, that is no longer an issue, I mean, this has made it up to the state level, FWC folks, Derek's done a good job on his side, working with their budget and getting in their master planning and all that sort of stuff. One of the downsides we had this year was they only have one contracted herbicide applicator for this entire area from Tallahassee to Pensacola. So he just got delayed in getting it on the schedule, so we missed our window essentially, it's the first part of the summer, um, to get the spray done. Uh, if anything, in future applications, maybe we could work with the state and maybe they'll solicit a a separate applicator just for the Mill Pond, so we don't have to work with this whole schedule. Um, but, I mean, I kind of feel for the state and Derek specifically because he's got, I forget how many, tens of water bodies with, um, just as bad and the same sentiment from those local areas, so it's not a, not a Mill Pond issue only, he's got a lot on his plate.
Well, you know, I had, had an opportunity to mention it to, uh, Representative Abbott and basically relay that same information to him is that, that if there's any help that they can give us with getting additional applicators so that we're not, uh, you know, in a delay mode waiting for him to, uh, to get to us, uh, I think that would be, you know, beneficial not only for us, but for any other, uh, you know, waters of body, bodies of water that are uh, dealing with the same type of issues, so, you know, maybe we can send a, a letter to, uh, our legislative, uh, delegation. I'd be happy to, to write it and sign it and, and, you know, ask for some support there.
Um, Mr. Abbott has been out there and looked at the situation, we took him out, so he's aware of it.
I know he's aware of it, yeah.
Do you know of anywhere that it's, that they have gotten rid of it?
No, I don't know of anywhere that it's been fully eradicated.
Either, I, I mean, that's what I'm saying, I don't know, it can be done.
No, it, I mean, it'll be, it, I mean, it's been, so ninety-three, nineteen ninety-three is when I've got the photos of it topped out, I mean, uh, old style camera or, uh, photo that, I mean, we're talking thirty years ago, and I'm convinced, there ain't no science behind this, so just what I think, the drawdown we did for the construction projects that hit spring is what stressed and sparked this additional growth that we're dealing with now, so I'm hesitant to do a drawdown even with treatments if that did in fact play a part in where we're, what we're dealing with now.
There's a place in California, Clear Lake, uh, that they have the same problem, and they eradicated it for like ten years.
You mentioned the grass carp, do you still have them in there?
Oh, yeah, we've got two different stockings.
And the problem with the grass carp, they get four years old, they stop eating the grass.
Their, their dietary changes and they don't eat as much once they get a little age on them.
Oh, the spray, oh, not an effect on them, I mean, for.
No, it's completely safe for swimming, quite.
How many things in there?
How many fish?
Yeah, I, I know, I'm talking about grass carp.
But I, yeah, I mean, uh, the last, it's unknown how many from the original stocking is left from the early two thousands. Um, the last one they did, I believe it was a year and a half, two years ago, was two fish per acre, so what's that, four hundred fish, give or take? So they want to do that again, so it'll be a double stock, um, coming up in.
How, how long do you think it'd be before they're eating, if that's correct?
That's part of the unknown, um, four years, five years, ten years, I mean, the ones that are in there now are twenty plus, we know they're, they're doing us no good, um, but we're not sure exactly how long they're effective for control of, uh, Hydrilla.
Well, that's the whole thing, I mean, you know, you're asking, uh, people to wait years, multiple years to, to, uh, yeah, get this problem resolved and, you know, maybe it'll happen a little bit quicker, but, uh, yeah. Okay, uh, I've lost track to who actually made the motion and seconded the motion on the last, uh, did we even get one? Okay, Chair Entertained a Motion to Approve Stones Aquatic Weed and Algae Removal, the quote from them, so that they can proceed with, uh, Clean Spring Creek.
I'll make a motion, we'll approve it, but also ask Rhett to look at the possibility of moving into the Mill Pond and using that harvester to help clean it up.
So, uh, to be clear, the motion was to go ahead and approve the quote from Stones Aquatic, and whatever dollars are left out of that forty thousand dollar TDC expenditure, talk to, uh, Kelsey Williams, who's back there in the back, you've heard the request, to see if we can use the, those, the rest of those dollars in some form, uh, of, uh,
Mitigation.
Mitigation on the, uh, Mill Pond as far as the floating debris that's there now. Okay, so that's your motion?
That's it.
Motion, second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising your right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-four, which is a board approval of, uh, a quote from Hydra Services, this is for the Lowe's Lift Station Repair, Ms. Daniels.
This is to, uh, board approval of quote from Hydra Services in the amount of forty-five thousand two hundred and ninety dollars for the repair and placement of pipe at the Lowe's Lift Station.
Just the company we've worked, you feel comfortable, comfortable with?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, because that lift station stand for the Mill Pond on the route.
No, this is one over, uh, we call it Sonny's, it's over on highway seventy-one.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it was, what we come up with with Mr. Uh.
What?
My thought.
It's a, he's no longer pursuing it as far as I'm aware.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch, any other questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-five, uh, this is board approval of a quote from Row Drilling, Mr. Uh, Daniels.
This is Row Drilling of repairs, uh, to the Pilot Walmart Production Well Pump in the amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Where will these dollars come from?
They're budgeted in our utilities, maintenance of water plants, both of those last two items.
Rhett, does that include the filtration system?
No, this is just, we're currently on a, uh, they actually were able to loan us a, a pump, our, our well has been lost production a few weeks ago, and they pulled everything, and this is what they come up with after analysis, but we're currently on a, on a longer one, longer pump.
But you're working on the filtration system?
I, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We've got a motion from Commissioner Branch, second from Commissioner Peacock, any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. Opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously, item number twenty-six, uh, moving down the agenda toward the end is board approval of Kroger Subdivision Participation Form, Ms. Daniels.
Uh, Ms. Jordan's going to share with you all on this item.
Ms. Jordan's.
Oh, I forgot what the thought that she said.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the, uh,
Participation Form.
Well, the participation, except the money from Kroger.
Okay, I'm sorry, this completely flipped my mind, uh, this is another case in the line of opioid cases, but this is the case that right now the Florida Attorney General has not agreed to sign on to, uh, so this is, um, we're asking for approval for this kind of, um, in the event that the Attorney General signs on to it, we'll be ready to go, they want to go ahead and have the pleadings ready.
So you need a motion from us to accept it if the Attorney General approves?
Contingent upon that, okay, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to accept the agreement contingent upon the Attorney General's approval. Second from Commissioner Branch, any other questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-seven, last item on the agenda is board approval of reappointment of Thomas Lewenberger to the Tri-County Airport Authority, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, this is a request to reappoint him for another three-year term, beginning October one, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, you've heard the request. Got a motion from Commissioner Crutchfield, second from Commissioner McKinney, any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Uh, Will and, we didn't have any additional items, so that concludes our agenda. Uh, with that being said, is there anyone in the audience, uh, wishing to speak to anything that's not on the agenda, now is the, uh, time to come forward. Seeing no hands, uh, Will and nothing else from you, uh, you've got.
I have a couple of things, uh, the first thing, Rhett, did you have that item that you want to present?
Yeah, so we had this come in over the holiday weekend, um, so we got a pay request from CBNL, which is our Dillon Road Contractor, has been doing the resurfacing and water sewer main extension over there. Um, so we have a, I apologize for not having this in there, but a request for payment of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and four dollars and thirty-five cents. Um, and this will include change order number three, which was an addition of a cross string that was replaced once they did the milling of the asphalt they found, um, I believe that's already been addressed, but this request came in early this morning and asking for approval.
You've heard the request, is this, I mean, this is part of their contract clause?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
It's part of the budgeted.
Yep.
So moved.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions, comments, clarifications, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand.
And I'll add too, just as a quick update on that project, they've, uh, made it to substantial completion, we're gonna walk through this Thursday and work on punch list, we could have a closeout package for it next meeting, that'd be complete.
And you said they're actually already, uh, occupying that building and operating out of it?
No, sir, not yet, so they are working on the physical structure, um, but they still have some site work, the parking lot's not completed, just some, some other issues, um, but.
When do you anticipate them being able to move in, do you think, a couple of, by the first year?
Oh, yeah, this year, this calendar year.
Okay, one more item.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, so back in the fall, you all, um, had an item come before you for Ms. Deborah Baker, uh, in regard to an HHRP house. And so as we're, through a number of events that came to our attention, that, uh, one of the things that was directed by the board was not only that the flooring should be looked at, but that a punch list should be can, uh, put together by the inspector and brought to you all to see what that was. So, um, we were contacted by Ms. Baker a few weeks ago, during the last couple of weeks, and she brought that up, that she didn't feel that the punch list was ever done. Um, and so after doing some investigation into the file and looking at it, the punch list was done. Uh, but the inspector said he recommended the flooring be replaced and that all other items he considered home owner maintenance type issues. And so what didn't happen was us bring it back to the board and put it on the record that there was a punch list completed and this is what was the recommendation. Um, and so I do believe that Ms. Baker may be on the line today, because I did tell her I was going to seek, uh, recommendation or clarification from the board. Uh, but just really wanted to say that I do feel staff did what we were supposed to. We just wanted to put it on the record that that's what was found.
Okay, uh, is, is, Ms. Baker, are you online by any chance? Rhett, do we have anybody online that you're aware of?
I don't see anybody else online.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll go to the, uh, Commissioner's round table and if she, uh, wants to speak after we can conclude that, then we'll hear from her. With that being said, Michelle, do you have anything from council?
I did want to update. Um, we filed the answer yesterday in the Compass Lake in the Hills, the new case. Uh, at this time, their attorney, uh, does not intend to seek any kind of emergency relief. Uh, so I thought we might have a request for a hearing, um, at this point, but we don't.
So no action needed on that?
No.
Very good. Okay, with that being said, Commissioner Peacock?
Grass cutting. Where are we?
Uh, physically on the road, on the west side, um, probably still west of two thirty-one if I had to guess. Making round two, working on round two.
I got some Johnson grass out on Blue Springs Highway. If we don't do something soon, we're gonna have to get chainsaws to it.
Yeah.
Uh, did we get some more people to operate the tractors?
We're running all six right now.
And you're running them all together?
Yes.
As, as we all know, right now with rain and sun, uh, everything's growing.
Probably.
Weeds and it's tough to stay up with it. I mean, we've got a lot of people in my district complaining about it as well, but, uh.
We couldn't get over more dirt if we split them?
Color's the same, just different area.
Well, it's been a while and the grass is deep.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, how many tractors do we have that are operational?
Seven.
Seven. What happened to the other one? We had eight.
Yeah. Critical malfunction, sir.
Okay. And then is that one of those purchases, right?
So the deck is actually what is shot. The tractor runs, we use it out of the spare. Um, the deck itself, mower, whatever you call it, is no longer functioning.
So I assume in budget, you're, you're going to be going after a new mower?
Yeah, well, actually, our entire lease is up this year, so we got a whole new, uh, whole new batch coming in for consideration.
And I'll remind everybody that we've got our budget workshop starting not next week, but the week after that, uh, so. One second, we got our first budget workshop.
Um, have you heard anything out of the core on Butler Road?
Have not.
He's meant, they are having a terrible time with personnel. I've been waiting on, um, other projects for months, literally. I, I've touched base every so often. I reached out to our, our local folks here at the Chattahoochee office and it, it's been a nightmare currently dealing with core personnel. Okay, this, we need to stay on that.
I do almost every week.
The, uh, traffic out at Blue Springs is pretty heavy over the weekend. Can we look at improving the edge of the road if you're getting people backing up on Blue Springs Highway? Maybe, uh, with the idea of putting in some sort of a turn lane there? Uh, start building up that shoulder and rocking it and everything. And by the time they get there, putting in the, uh, asphalt on the water and on the sewer project.
Right.
It might be where they could just, you know, do the turn lane for us for a reasonable amount.
Yep.
But, uh, look at the possibility of doing that.
Okay.
Because you get fifteen, twenty cars backed up out there, it's a problem.
I get photos every weekend of traffic backed up right there.
So send, maybe you and Jeffrey can look at it from the process, uh, the, uh, angle of putting a turn lane.
Okay.
Also, before you get off the Blue Springs construction work going out there, I had a couple of people complain about, uh, cables being cut, uh, utilities being cut. Is that, is that been an issue more? Uh, I know that anytime you got road work like that, you know, getting into existing utilities is always an issue. Has it been more problematic than normal or is it, uh?
Absolutely. One of the worst, on the Indian Springs side, not so much the Blue Springs. On the Indian Springs side, it's been absolutely terrible.
I've, I've had complaints on, from the Blue Springs side as well.
Really? I haven't heard from anybody on there.
I'll, I'll get with you, relay, relay the information that I got.
And then we got, uh, Robin Bezinski from All Day High, he's the lead inspector. He could probably tell you a lot better than I can, but, um, the utility companies, private locators are not, are not doing very, very good job. I mean, I've been out witness literally several, I mean, so with state rules, you get two foot either side of the, whatever the utility is, and we're seeing some ten, twenty, I mean, I don't even call them off, I just call them missed, they're so far off. Um, so a lot of that burden comes back on the contractor, but really and truly, they don't know what's down there. It's, it's not their fault.
If, if, say an internet cable get buried, internet cable gets cut, uh, who, whose responsibility is that to talk to, to call the, uh, utility company? And is that the homeowner's responsibility or is that the contractor's responsibility?
And it depends on what type of construction. It's a lot easier, obviously, with open trenching laying the sewer mains versus, say, doing a water boring. Um, but if this is noticed by the contractor, we have a utility comp, a utility, uh, phone list in their package and so on. They got it on site, they can call, you know, whoever's listed in the area and say, hey, we damaged so-and-so. And then that company will mobilize the repair crew. I have one out, um, I had a text come in, there was a crew out in Indian Springs last night, out till like seven o'clock in the evening or something like that, trying to do a repair on what had been bored in. So that just depends on what type of work is being done.
Well, I, again, I had a constituent basically say that, uh, he was told, uh, that if, uh, 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 a cable was cut, it was not their, it was not the contractors nor the, the, uh, the engineers', uh, responsibility to contact them. It was up to the homeowner and that didn't sound right to me.
If they're, if they're out of service, we, I absolutely recommend that the customer make that call. Um, but we do communicate, we, you know, contractor or inspectors communicate with the utility owners.
Is they not?
Are they doing anything about getting someone who can be more precise with the locating? Because it is a problem.
It is a problem and that's where it's tricky, you know, a private company is hiring another private company to perform a service. We, I mean, we're really trying to get involved. That's, it's not.
But we have more star concern.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
I talk all the way, I forget, I think it's Comcast or somewhere. I've talked to folks all the way over in Jacksonville. You know, some of the upper level regional folks trying to just make sure they're aware of what's going on.
Yeah. Michigan. I don't have anything. Commissioner McKinney, now, you're in.
Uh, as far as grass cutting, uh, certain weeds, are we spraying around, spraying around those stop signs and all, for, you know, poisons, pepper size and?
Yes, we do have, uh, so part of what our mowing supervisor is doing, he's taking out the typosides that you guys allowed us to purchase a couple of years ago. And so they go out as they're mowing and weed eating and tidying up and doing some spray behind them.
And, uh, Mr. Register, let me just see you after the meeting, please. That's awesome.
Mr. Crutchfield?
Yeah, I got a couple. One, one of them is, uh, I know that's probably not a county issue, but on the Bayline Railroad, we're there at Holman Lane. I called this guy one time, it's been a while, a little while back, and there was going, a Mark Dippel. I reckon in charge of that and he said that he would, uh, he was going to fix that, but it never happened. I don't know if I need a little help somehow or another to kind of get them moving on that a little bit. Uh, he mentioned to me about, I reckon, putting asphalt or something and, and, uh, you know, I called Jeffrey and he said he didn't have no way to haul it at the time. Which Jeffrey said, which is the truth, you gotta know when the train gonna be coming or not to do any work, you know, because I mean, it'd be lost faith. And Jeffrey said he would haul it, you know, they'd put it down and burn it to asphalt, you know, I know. Uh, I told the guy he could call Jeffrey, you know, and I guess that never come about.
Yeah, that was, that was the offer we made, you know, we'll do the work, we'll provide the materials, y'all tell us, you know, the schedule or, they want to have someone on site, so they gonna have, they'll always have an inspector on site when they're working around railroad. And they just, they hadn't been, carried on their end of the deal yet.
Well, I, I checked a couple of times, I'd be down that way and I, for real.
Yep.
Going across there, which he knew because they replacing, um, uh, cross tiles and all under that, I guess, and a while back, you know, I was going to fix that, but that, we're standing there and that never got done. I might need somebody to recognize contacting them.
We'll bump them again. We, we reach out every few months, trying to get it going. It's been an issue for a long time, well, every year.
Okay, and the other one is, I know the county got some property there at Frank Hill. I guess they were talking about maybe one time putting in a fire station from Jason Hatcher. And he says, growing up in little trees and county wasn't going to do anything with it right now. He could get that cleaned off, if you let him just farm it until y'all, or county decided what we want to do with it.
Where's that at?
Jason Hatcher at Frank Hill.
Only about five acres on two seventy-three.
How much right next to that?
It's on two seventy-three.
Yeah, but it's a small tract.
Yeah, it's a tree, that border, Craig Hill Crop Road.
Right, that's where we're going to put a fire station.
Fruit stand right next to the stand building, right?
Yeah, close to the stand building. Actually, it came off of his property. Well, his, uh, thing was that growing, if it's gonna grow up in trees and if you ever do anything, you gotta clear it off. If it wasn't gonna do anything right now, he was cleaning, cleaning on off and as long as he could farm it until.
Is that one of the pieces of property that we need to look at selling? I mean, uh?
It was on the, it was on the list that was put out and then we had those bidders on there.
I know at one time we were talking about putting a fire rescue station there and I think that, uh, Chief Brunner, I don't think that that's still in the, in the long range plan or?
And that came up before Cedar Jacob, um, you know, security disaster station and everything, you know, and that was, you know.
Anything else? Got, got a couple of items and then we'll close this out. McCormick Lake, Michelle. Um, do you know whether the, the Compass Lake and Hills ordinance that we just recently amended? Is there a provision in that ordinance that, that, that a buffer around McCormick Pond is maintained of which precludes any of the landowners from being able to put in docks there? I've never heard that, but I know that there's no docks there and I've often wondered why that is the case.
There are docks on McCormick.
There are?
Besides the, but meeting room where?
Um, if you come in, go to the left, I get the roads mixed up, but that big two-story house in, uh, down on Daniel Drive, they have one. I used to.
So, so as far as you know, there's not an ordinance that would preclude a landowner from building a dock out into the waterway?
Not unaware of it.
There could be a state regulation.
There is about square footage.
There could be a, a state regulation. We, there's nothing in our code about docks, um, generally.
Can you check into that?
I can, I mean, I, I'm trying to think of when the, the issue went before, not even court, it was the legislature that, um, determined that McCormick Lake belongs to the state. I can.
It falls under, yeah, state regulations, so for docks, it has to be a certain, under a certain square footage and, you know, state handles permitting and everything like that. We don't have any county restrictions.
Well, I mean, people at Silver Lake, people at Compass Lake put docks in all the time. I, it's just amazing to me that if you go around, you go around View Drive, none of those properties on that road, although there's a lot of landowners, none of them have docks.
Right.
And, uh,
They're going a couple houses too.
Yeah, but I do know several landowners that would like to do that, that have been told, I think, that they can't do that and don't know. Okay. Oh, anyway, I'd like to check into that if we could and see if there is anything that would prohibit that and if not, then we can get that information out to them.
I will.
Um, I was, I talked to Will Ann a little bit about this and it's just something I think we can address maybe in the budget. But, uh, Anderson Columbia, they, they pay a, we get a franchise fee from the gas that they use in the city of Marianna. And they're, the city of Marianna is in the process now of basically are going to be in the process of renegotiating that, uh, their price that they're paying for gas, natural gas. Uh, Anderson Columbia is indicated to me that they're paying extremely high rate per decafarm, whatever they sell it for, uh, in comparison to what other companies are buying it for. So they're, 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 I guess, the city's contract with whoever they purchased natural gas from is coming up, uh, for termination pretty soon and they're going to be renegotiating that, I think in March or April of next year. Gene has formally asked if we would consider either waiving or modifying the franchise fees that we get off of those gas sales in order to help them out until, until they renegotiate that and get some relief from the high gas prices. I think that's something that we probably need to at least discuss in the budget if everybody be willing to discuss it. Told him, I didn't think it would be something that we would, uh, be willing to, to take action on before we got into budget, but, uh, something that we might possibly consider, so.
I think we can discuss it, but, uh, his problem is with the city.
I don't know if we have the authority to waive those franchise fees or not.
We may not want to waive them. We just have to look at it.
Yeah.
See what he's paying, see what the city's charging.
Sarah, you had, I mentioned, talked to Sarah briefly. It was roughly about four thousand to seven thousand dollars a month that we're getting off those franchise fees. I've got it. That's all, of course, all of those users that are using the right of way out there, hotels, restaurants and everybody, yeah. Anyway, the, the only other thing I had is, uh, how are we coming on Pusher Road in Eastments?
Uh, under title search, we've issued a authorization for title company to do title purchase and waiting on that to come back so we can guarantee who signed the Eastments has that authority.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, anything else?
Uh, back on there, Jason Hatcher didn't get nothing to place it on. I, I don't know what the benefit of bore would be, but I make a motion that we let him clean off the trees that grow in there and farm it until county decides to do something with it. And I would think he would like, if he had something planted, he would like to know ahead of time, a little ahead of time. If he got a crop on there, he wouldn't lose what he had planted.
So what we would probably need is some sort of a lease agreement with us, right? I guess the attorney draw up some sort of a lease agreement and then, you know, a dollar a year or whatever you do.
I, I, I make a motion that we let him do that, clear it off, keep it, uh, to keep it clean. It'd be more interest for the county if they want to sell it or whatever. Only question he got, if he just planted something and got something started, he would like to be able to gather that for.
Yeah, you know, we're not coming in and destroying.
He would keep it clean.
So you, you're asking us to put together a lease for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Got a motion from Commissioner, uh, Crutchfield, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Mr. Rook, should you have something?
I've got something real quick. Um, a couple of things. Uh, first thing being, uh, we got our report turned in on time, um, and thank, uh, our officer for reporting this on that. Uh, that's the good news. The bad news is there, there's a couple of findings in there. One of which is, uh, something you guys just need to be aware, make aware of, so y'all, like, get how you want to do it. Uh, water and sewage. Uh, water and sewage accounts receiving. Since September thirtieth through June thirtieth, it's gone up a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. It's five hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars in receivers.
That's, is that due to?
Well, I was gonna tell you, there's two customers that theirs has increased a hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. And that being Camp Anderson and is it Aniva?
Aniva.
What was the second one?
Plant, Pellet Plan and Cotton Dew. Uh, those two accounts have gone up a hundred and seventy one thousand dollars by themselves.
I know there's been discussions with Camp Anderson about this.
And, and I think uh Red has been working, working on that, but and, and they are paying us, the last two months, they paid us ten thousand dollars, but the charge, they had eight thousand dollars worth of work. So when, when you owe over two hundred thousand, um, you know, that's a significant amount. And I want to bring that to the attention of the board, so y'all can start looking at it. Uh, it's, you know, the revenues are up one point six million, I think, through June thirtieth, uh, which is good. But we've only collected, I, I mean, we've, we're owed five hundred and sixty nine thousand in receivers. So when you look at that, that, that's not as good, and most of those are with two clients. Three hundred and sixty five thousand, I think, or about that is with two clients.
Is the, and we had a brief discussion about Camp Anderson. Is that still pretty much a result of their system out there just losing?
I won't let Red talk about that, but yes, and, and the problem that I see and Red, you're correct, Miss, I'm wrong, you and I have talked about this and he's tried to explain it. But we, we have a, a big meter and that's what the city of Marianna is charging us on. Well, the, the camp out there said that they've got leaks, so they don't think it's fair, but we're still paying for that sewage. You know, we're still paying.
The leaks, they are leaked on, in, on their system?
I think so. I mean, they got a master meter, they've installed some, some additional meters. Um, and they can say we're only using X number of gallons. But our big meter says we're sending out about three times that much, um, three or four. Um, so it is, there is a difference, but something's gonna have to be done. I, I don't know what the answer is. Uh, maybe something we had discussed during budget. But I do want to bring it up, put it on record, because the auditors have said, are y'all talking about this? And I said, yeah. I know we brought it up last year, you know, we, and I'm probably gonna bring it up every month.
Well, I mean, it needs to be, we need to work towards some resolution for sure.
Didn't we pass something several months ago pertaining to these issues?
Yes, so let me clear up one thing. So Aniva filed chapter eleven earlier this year, so we'll do that. We weren't able to bill them. I'm a hundred percent confident we're gonna recoup all of, all this due from Aniva. Um, Camp Anderson is a whole different situation. So the uh game plan from now, so we've got two months' worth of individual meter reads. They purchased meters for each of their facilities. We've been reading, they bought our meters and radio reads. We got on every building, so we're taking that as water and sewer, and then the master meter difference is water only. And I told him, I mean, regardless if it's used or leaked, it's he's responsible for. Um, so where we're at right now is planning a meeting with the city of Marianna to see what kind of relief we can get with the difference in the water and sewer versus water only. Um, we can absolutely prove now with the additional meters that that amount of water has not been going through the sewer system of that hundred and ninety something thousand dollars worth, about a hundred and thirty of it's sewer that we've already paid. That's my biggest concern. It's like, we have already paid that money on behalf of them for treatment of something that was never treated. Um, so we literally talked to, we, I mean, it's been going on for a while. I've kept Clay in the loop. Williams been involved, city's been involved. This, this is just a odd situation.
Yeah, I think we need to look back at our policy.
Well, and, and part of the policy, I think it's sixty days is really before you can do anything, and I'm gonna give you a scenario. And I don't know that it's happened, but if I had a motel out at the interstate and I knew I had a sale pending. And I don't pay my utility bill for two months, well, that's about ten grand for most of it, right? And I sell it to Commissioner Donald Froome. He opens up a new business, goes down and gets a new thing. I don't pay the water bill. What are y'all gonna do? And that's happened. There's like twenty three thousand dollars worth out there that, that's happened. Uh, now, some of its people just walk away, but there are some businesses out there that close down owing this money. So I, I think, and, and maybe we need to talk to the city of Marianna. And, and I know it may not be a uh pleasant thing, but we have, need to have an aggressive, I think. If you're not paid by fifteenth, we cut you off. And, and a lot of these municipalities work that way. And, and I'm not, you know, you don't want to cut a, a business off, um, that's doing business. But I, I don't know what the answer is, but this gets back to, we're in the water and sewer business now. We need to get in the business and, and, you know, Mr. Crutchfield's running business, and most of y'all run business. You, you can't just keep letting them go. Uh.
As, as a business owner, I mean, and, and you're expected to pay your bills, and as a business owner, you expect to pay your bills. I mean, you know, that's part of being in business, right? If you can't, uh, if you're not making enough money to pay your bills, then you probably need to rethink being in business.
There, there's a few individuals, but most of it, I would think the, the large majority of the money is businesses.
The one thing that sets Camp Anderson apart a little bit, makes it a little bit more difficult to see business at their end. And uh, I don't know that much about what they do, but uh, I think some of it's uh, uh, you know, taking kids that uh might not have opportunities otherwise to have recreational opportunities and uh giving them recreational opportunities. So it's a little, it's a little bit of a different situation uh than your typical, you know, business owner that's in it to make money. Also, but there again, I still, you know, we're in the.
Well, don't they have some source of revenue?
Well, this is, this is their time of the year that I think they have a lot.
And most of them kids have to pay for that camp.
Oh, yeah. They get church, I think they get some churches and different groups to give scholarships. But they, they still receive funds for the children that go.
I, I got a call this week about a business, cause a city cut their water off because they didn't pay.
Well, then that's different.
I said, you probably go pay your water bill. Be my suggestion.
Well, you know, I know as a homeowner, if I didn't pay my electric bill or didn't pay my water bill, it's gonna get turned off after a period of time. I mean, that's, you know.
And I just wanted to bring that, so I can put it on the record, but that's all I had.
Okay, with that being said, just as anybody else, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting of the Justice County Board of County Commissioners.